Hi, this is Praios and yeah, just an unstructured stream. Yeah, just bought vision and just want to play around with it a bit, probably do some quizzes. See what happens. Oh, we got 200 BBs, this was an edit. Before that, oh, that's very nice. Let's add many different stacks, so it's allow everything basically and just... Take it from there. Or should we? Do... Oh, too many filters. Too many filters. That's much for me. So many configuration possibilities already overwhelmed. Okay, let's... Let's do a bit more structured. Let's train... Wait, what is cut off? We can also do pre-flop now? What the fuck? Difficulty hard. Okay, let's do this. Okay, we got... What stacks do we got? So... What happened before? Okay, he bet 50%, we called. Okay, that's already a very loose call. Wouldn't have necessarily expected this to happen and once he checks to us, we probably... We have no showdown value. It's not that bad if we get raised out of our hand, so 66% and that's not correct. We should check. And... We should... But 31% bet and we bet when we have vector hearts and vector clubs. But this makes no huge difference. Ah, what's here? Heart and club. My hand, check. This was always my problem with vision. New hand or new spot? It's a new hand. See merits for both checking and betting. As a check. Yeah. So this, we can make life a bit easier and just say that is 100% check. New hand. Two pair, blocking the straight, so yeah, that's a bet. We still check some. Which ones do we check? Aces and spades. I don't understand which combination should be checked. But at least this was... Most of the time correct. Ace of spades, we got now. Don't block the straight anymore. Now I see a bit more merits to checking, so let's try that. With hearts and clubs, we bet. With spades and clubs, we bet. Okay, well, this seems random to me. New spot. No, I think I messed up. Don't get it. So, okay, we should have 50 and 100 BB. And generate again. So we bet and get raised. Guess we have to fold now. Okay, but... Okay, we fold almost always. With our hands. Okay, do we want to... That's not that interesting. Okay. For some reason I decided to play this one again. This, he might be getting all in. I mean, most humans would not, but although... We have no heart in our hand. This is probably bad, so I still go for it. That's correct, but I've... What is if we got hearts too? We got hearts, we call some and raise some as it seems. Okay, uh, let's take a new hand. Yeah, that's... When... Oh! This should be... Folded, I guess. Yeah. If we got hearts too when we get it in, but that's... So I probably is... Ugh, not enough sleep tonight, sorry for that. New spot. Okay, now we are 100 BB deep. And this is a four-bet pot, so raise, re-raise, re-raise. He check the flop, called a small bet, the turn. What is the question here? I mean... Our hand looks way too strong to consider folding. Let's see if we can get... Oh, that's not that good of a hand now. Five, six, seven. Eight makes us a straight, hard make out a flush. Very rarely an ace could be good. We might be drawing that already against a full house or a straight, so that's fold. New spot. Four-bet pot. Four-bet pot. Raise, re-raise, so we checked as the aggressor. And... Now we are not the aggressor. Oh, hey! He called pre-flop. What? What? So we called pre-flop with ace-ace against the four-bet, so one moment. Ah, no, okay, UTG, raise, re-raise, re-raise. Okay, understood. Um, pots, I guess. We could also check, I mean... In my eyes, this seems to not make that big of a difference. But the problem here is that we got everything. We got the flush, we got the straight, we got the set, we got everything, so let's check. Yeah. Uh, new hand, so... That's not a new hand. That's the same hand. Are you kidding me? New hand. Ah! Now we are talking. Ugh, fucking this one tough. Is... This is the check? No, it's a pot bet. Okay, new hand. This is an interesting one. Third time, the same hand. This is annoying. Hmm, check. New hand. It's always this one, new hand. What the fuck? Reload. Always got this hand. So, seems like we don't have many hands for this, but did I click reload again? No. Uh, this is fifty BBs, single race pot, flop was a small bet, we called. We have no spade. I guess, check. It's the way to go. Yep. Okay, new hand for this one. Um, looks like a bet. Yeah, this one is getting bet always, so... Let's continue. Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, I guess we call, but... Yep. Too high up in our range to consider folding. New hand. I want a weaker hand. This looks like we cannot continue anymore. New hand. Uh, let's get a call. New hand. That's a bunch of nonsense. I wonder why we bet the turn? Isn't this standard bet? Sick. Um, I guess we have to fold again, although we block a spade, but... I mean, we are not necessarily calling this hands with a strongest in form of hand strength, but the ones with the best blockers to the strong hands from our opponent. But yeah, I can't imagine this should be called. Let's do another one. It's also easy. I have to answer the door very quickly. We'll be back in a minute. You can figure out what this is. I mean, it's not hard, it's gold. Sorry for that, but in live play, sometimes things like that happen. Um, yeah, I guess we want a new spot. We call this. Um, new spot. Still waiting for something very interesting. So... Check. Bet raise. Getting called. Got the nut flush blocker, the straight blocker. Top pair. Unfortunately... No additional equity or at least not much against most of his range. I mean, against sets, we might have a 10. Ahhh. Is he continuing here? I have no clue. Uh... Have no clue. Check. Yeah, he wants to continue often if he has a nut flush, unsurprisingly. So this should be checked and not continued. So, again, the same spot, small bets, small raise. This time, we got the six-seven instead of the nine something. Does this changes a lot? Uh, it makes it a bit more likely that our opponent can have a straight, but... Does this make a difference? I cannot imagine, but it does. Yeah. So give us a new hand. Ugh, I think we are too strong to bet. We have everything. Okay. Things otherwise. Okay. Hmm. We already had this one. Ah, it's always the same bullshit, so yeah. New spot. I mean, I'm not thrilled about this quiz yet. Flop was check, check. Now it's check and half pot bet. Your hand is very weak, so probably fold. Wait. That's a clear call. I would call this one too. Um... Probably call. I mean, we're getting great odds. We blocked the nut flush. Don't want to turn this into a bluff. Because we have too much showdown value. This is crap. This is a straight. Okay, even with order, this made blocker, this is easily enough. This fold, so let's move on to the new spot. Check, check. Now we face a bet. That's a four-bet pot and that's a small bet. Unfortunately, no flush cards at all in our hand, but yeah, we're getting a great price. Gut shots, guess call is correct. But, uh... So we are the aggressor. Hmm. Yeah, but... Ah, fold. Yep. Wait, uh... Folding two? This one looks better. We block a 10. Let's lighten it. Hi! I bought vision as well. Uh... And I wonder what to do here. Hmm. Hmm. Close. I see. Nice. Yeah. What would you do here? Um, I guess fold. Yep. Fold two. Daui. Bet. Is this check raise or just call it? I guess call most likely, although how do we play rivers? But yeah, he can play river score 100% perfect, so it has to be call. Uh, fold. Um, this... So far, I think I did relatively well. Um, I guess we have to call only because... Yeah, he has no straight, he might bluffing. We don't want to force out his bluff. Uh, this... Wow! Guess fold. No, this is called. Seems like... Don't know what, why this is a call. Some other hands. Not that different when not called. So this hand is always getting called. Um... So we don't block hearts. Okay, you can have a hard flush draw. Though he didn't bet the flop, we block spades a bit. Uh, he can have a straight. We don't block a straight. I mean, this, I guess the price is too good. Okay, let's do another hand. Eight, seven. Just guess call. No, we want to raise. No more slow play here, as it seems. Uh, again, it's a wait, but now we can we now call? Because we also got the hearts locked. Yeah. Uh, ten, a queen, you call. What? I think, ah, okay, I think I had this hand before, but it was a bit different. We had no ten, but check, check, queen or queen, queen, jack. And this was a call and this one is apparently not. So with spades, you want to call. Uh, yeah, sometimes it's very hard to see how he is constructing ranges. But I think I'm already doing better than last time. When I did these quizzes. Uh, so what happened here? Flop was bet call and now it's check and he bets. We're getting a good price, but our hand is rubbish. Do you do these quizzes too? And if you do, um, do you also have this issue? But if you click new hand, you often only get one hand and that's it. So we had this hand before and we called it again. So let's try it again. Yeah, as you can see, same hand again. Stupid. Okay, new spot. So, single race pot, flop was check, call and now it's checked again. We have the button. Here's the UTG aggressor. We are more likely to have a nine, but he's more likely to have an ace. We block a nine a bit by having indirect blockers. And yeah, we also got a problem because none of our vector draws. Got in, guess our equity is too weak to try to bluff again and our blockers also... Not good for bluff and yeah, we check. Let's see. Now a hand. We got an ace this time. Ah, this, this hard flush was also... Come in. This is tough, I think. Uh... Should we bet? I mean, a bet is almost purely for protection, but from what are we protecting? Uh... So he could have... So he could have called the flop with an overpair other than aces. He probably folds the turn. He does not have many outs unless he picked up hearts as well. He could slow play a nine or four four. Is he calling flop with a four? Probably with hands like ace, king, queen, four. And in that case, his continuing range probably has our kicker beat. I have no clue, to be honest, what we should do. Uh, what should we do here? I guess you also, no matter what you do, the mistake cannot be too bad. I also wonder why my Streamlabs OBS is messing up because I have clearly at least one viewer. And it's always showing me zero viewer use the learn tab the most. Uh, make notes about solver tendencies in different boards, like what board solvers leading most and less. For example, yeah, I think often it is very hard to, um, find a pattern. Uh... Ah, I... But you, so you also, um, don't know the answer. I guess, I guess check. Okay, check is correct. Let's do another hand on this board. Uh, okay, we got a flush draw two. And he might fold tens, jacks, queens, kings. So... Betting can't be that bad, right? But it's in the solvers', in the solvers' eyes it is. Okay. Now our flush draw is a lot better. But on the downside, we block kings, queens, jacks and tens. A guest check? No, now we want to bet. But yeah, for example, look into this. How the fuck? I mean, how should I learn? How should I learn how, um... How to, which of these, uh, queen, jack, ten, queen combos I should bet and which should I check? I mean, most are checking. So at least about this I was correct. But mine is betting. And I have no clue why. My hand checked ten. Huh. I have no idea why. This is a bet. And yeah, how I should find out which are no bets. So it is apparently good if we don't interact with the backdoor spades. So the last, although here also cards don't interact with the seals and these are checked. Yeah, it's very hard for me to come up with an explanation why these hands are bad and these are the ones that check. Anyways, let's not waste more time. I guess this could be still ahead and you also don't want to get raised ever, so I would check, but not sure. So yeah. It's correct, apparently, your hand. Uh... This one has not much at all. So we were betting with backdoor draws. Well, and none of these came. Uh... We have no equity in case we get called, so no equity bluffs are not what the solver is doing normally. Hmm. Yeah, I feel like a noob, why? Because it's very hard often to find a pattern in these these spots where the solver applies a mixed strategy. But I guess I'm doing a lot better than in the last time I did a quiz. Um, the last time I did a quiz, I just restarted with playing poker after like four years or three years break. I don't know. Um, anymore how long I took a break. And yeah, I guess I improved. Uh, I also did a lot. I mean, you can basically see me study every day. So yeah, unfortunately, no, uh, hands from my session today. This is because I don't play the session. Uh, let's do one more hand from this spot. Um, this seems to have a lot of showdown value and don't see worse call and most stuff has us beat. And we have very few outs. And if we are not beat, he has very few outs, so the guest checking makes sense. Yeah, it, it, that's the case. So let's load a new spot and chat feel free to also participate here. Um, three bet pot, flop, check, check, and now we face a small bet with four only. I guess, I mean, he has this has hit something on this board way more often and our hand is very weak, so I cannot imagine that this is anything else when I fold. Uh, yeah, this is a completely different story. And we also get a price that is unbeatable, so I guess calling is not an op-, uh, calling, folding is not an option. This one is also quite weak. But the price still is right. Uh, is how much better is this compared to four? Not much, I would say. Flop and check, check. I mean, I can imagine what he might call just because it gets a great price, but... This seems close to me, but I still prefer fold. And he wants to call. And with a six, he's calling always, basically. And if he has a flush draw two, he will put in some raises. Seven, eight. Just a gutshot. Hmm, what? Okay, a gutshot is enough. Rivers also play very weird, but yeah, I guess we got to defend very wide if he's betting so small. And yeah, three clean outs. The nuts are enough, as it seems. Okay, new hand. Um, this is nothing, so this has to be fold. Um, a deuce, just deuce. I also don't see what big of a difference if I have a four, six or a deuce, but... Maybe the solver does. I mean, the six may, might sometimes win a showdown if it goes check, check on the river. So yeah, that's probably why he is folding the deuce but calling the six. Same one again. Um, nothing. This is a call. Okay, new spots. Four bet pot. Uh, are we the aggressor? It's a way to figure out who the aggressor is. Sometimes this is, um... Bit tricky. So raise, re-raise, re-raise. So we are not the aggressor. We don't, and we get raised, and we got strong hands, so I guess we want to call. New hand. I don't understand why we want to donk without any blockers with king high ever. But now we have to let it go. What? This is getting slow played? So he's slow played rainbow aces. He leads small. I mean... Against many humans, this is still a fold. I would assume, but in solver world with a gutshot two blocking spade, I guess this is a call. Interestingly, he has in the... I guess all these complete rubbish hands should be folded. Oh, I... Oh, he takes this line less than 1%. So we have to be careful. So this is probably get it in. No. He's calling. Okay, so... Correct answer is called this 1%. Bullshit. Thing. Made me click the wrong button. I mean, I think this is closer to fold when a call, to be honest. Hmm, it's the same hand again. Call, new hand. Uh, this looks good. Uh... Ah... Backdoor flush draw, two backdoor flush draws. Um, we are not supposed to have that many four fives. He's supposed to have a lot more four fives. We don't want to stop him from bluffing, I guess, or to bear value better than so. I guess this is a call with all the back draws we got as well. No, it is not. Why not? Okay, our hand wants to get it in apparently all the time. No slow plays allowed. New hand. Um, this is a fold? Or is he continuing here? I mean, the odds are... We should add a tab for odds. Oh, what is it? We call like 50, and then we can win 25% equity we need. This hand looks weak. I mean, we got some nuttiness, but the hand still looks weak and we're out of position, so fold. New hand. As we already learned, I think that's the same hand as before, and we want to call. And these types of hands always want to get in. We learned before, so... Then let's get it in. This hand comes up very often, so new spot because we ran out of hands. Hmm, three bet pots. So he don't, we called, we got three pair, gutshot. I guess... We check. Get one step closer to showdown and have the ability to make a full house. No. We are not scared. We want to get it in. Okay, new hand. This board is interesting for sure. Uh, get it in. Like this one a lot more than before because now we got more backup in your hands. Pot. No, slow play. He's slow play all the time. Yeah, uh... So for example, if someone can help me. Why do these two combos wants to pot and the others don't? Anyone sees the pattern here? Spades and clubs. Only clubs. I don't understand, to be honest. New spot. Three bet pot. Check, bet, raise, call. We got the nuts. And pair blocker and flush draw. New hand. Hmm, getting nuts. Different kind of nuts. Snow, flush redraw. But a straight redraw. Okay, new hand. Set, blocking the straight two, all in. Uh... Blocking the straight, having a... Oh, we don't block this. We block this trade and we get flush draw two. Still all in? I guess so. Like already clip pot. Uh, what? So he has a nut. Can continue, uh... Bet. Wrong, the answer is pot. Yep, uh, new hand. Call? Yep. Uh, new spot. Bet, call, check. It's a nut, so... He just called when he don't. We called. Block the flush. Just have an overpair, blocking a king as well. I want to get to showdown, I guess. I want to, I want to bluff more or less. I guess I wanted to get to showdown. Uh, he bets if he has a hard flush two. Or if he has a hard blocker, makes sense. New hand. So the hard nut blocker, not the blocker I had. Um, yeah, we... What? I guess we learned that this was a bet. But not really, so a lot of slow playing here. We only want to bet the majority of the time if we have a lot of hearts. And we want, also want to bluff when we got the blocker. So yeah, again, this is a bit tricky to figure out, um... Why he's choosing this hand as a candidate to slow play. Yeah, these unreadable patterns are also the reason why nobody is playing GTO in PLO unless they are cheating. New hands. I guess checking is the way to go. It is new hand. Hmm, block hearts but only with a king, so that seems a bit weak. Got to pair, we have showdown value, so... Let's go to showdown. Uh, bet? No, he's slow playing everything. Although, um... My hand is like 50/50 and... It's still mysterious why... He bets some and not the others. So I guess with mine, he might be preferring to check because he's blocking one more big hard flush. But yeah. But sometimes he's also betting, as you can see. So he's only betting when these seven is not interacting with the board. Uh, so tricky these spots. Check, oh, yeah, check. Uh, is it a slow play or are we allowed to bet this time? We're blocking a big heart. Block. I guess this has to be checked, I mean, we block everything. No, if you block everything, we want to bet. And if you block almost nothing, we don't want to bet. Although my hand prefers to check. But... This for, so most other combinations of this hand are not betting, but mine is for some reason. I don't understand, really don't understand. Why he chooses the hands he does choose. Anyways, new spot. I'm not sure if this is leading to anything. And if I learn doing this, I guess it's a call, we get a very good price. And it's not... Uh, forward pot, so raise, re-raise, re-raise. We are the, uh, the aggressor. Uh, maybe... Yeah, I mean, he should not be betting once a, then ace can comes when our range is very ace heavy. And a jack, a second jack also hurts our hand. So I can find reasons why we want to fold. New hand, uh, but it has to be fold as we have nothing. Uh... This is not that different compared to the ten jack check example. Now, if he has just an ace, we do a lot better. As we have a better kick up this time, so I think calling makes sense. Um, new hand. New hand, um... This one is better than, uh... Than the one with a pair and a two, so this has to be a call. Uh... Call. Fold. Yeah, also with a gut shot, so yeah, that's pretty easy call. Uh, hands start repeating, so new spot. Fifty would be, uh... We donks and the pre-flop aggressor and we have a gut shot. And pair. That list looks like bluff lead, so we probably should not continue. This is another bluff lead, so we should not continue. Uh, this is also very weak, but... Yeah. Five, uh, open ender only. This is all tricky. We blocking his bluffs. What does this mean? We block his bluffs? It might be time to get money in. Because with a five, you will have a hard time to get away. Yeah. Um, this probably will, although this is not a gut shot, it's just a flush draw. Uh, we don't block the straight draws too much. I think I can go to the door, but you can tell me your answer to this in the meantime while...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seems like the dog is just freaking out for no reason. This is tough, uh, this is very tough. And chat also has no answers from me at least. Don't see anything written here. Hmm... How good are odds? Not great. Is it still a four fold? Yes, it is. Hmm, also fold, all these hands are folds, as it seems. Bet, that's a big one. Big draw, also blocking an eight. He might be just shoving. Uh, four, six, seven, nine, always cards make us a straight. You also block an eights, so it's unlikely he has a full house. Could be bluffing with hearts, which he might fold still. Hmm, an eight is also an out most of the time. If he has a five, so we also have indirect blockers to five, so yeah, let's pot. Uh, when is he just calling? Backdoor spades, he's just calling. Uh, yeah, some, my hand is doing more... Calling it seems, but for some reason it's still the correct answer. Hey? Okay, we have a heart and three spades when we call. And if we have no heart and three spades, then we want to do more potting. Yet, new hand, uh, three, four, this is a fold. Interesting how many bluff leads the solver finds. I think some hands already repeated again. Five, six... Uh... Oh. Okay, let's stop this, new spot. Hmm, double pot, flop, bet, call. Yeah. But this was, oh... This might be too weak. Ace king beats us, but ace king might be folding. Uh, downside to betting here is if we get called, we don't have many outs. If he's calling with a king and then ace kicker. Check, uh, let's continue and see how we react to a bet, I guess fold is the reaction we do. Uh... Okay, now we get a great price. Is it still a fold? Despite getting a great price? I mean, uh... No, raise. Okay, he wants to ship it in. New hand. Yeah, okay, that's not good. New hand. It's also not good, new hand. That is not good. Okay, that's a call. Okay, makes sense, we still get the great outs. Okay, then, uh, continue the slow play, no, get it in. Uh, although... This slow plays some... New spot, uh... Forward pot. We forward right, uh, re-raise, re-raise, yeah. New hand. Got less than pot left. Backdoor flush draw, overcards, gut shot. This seems close, so only the gut shot, backdoor flush draw should give us... Almost enough equity to get it in, so guess, oh, folding still. I'm impressed, I mean, I'm impressed. This look good enough. I mean, sometimes we would have like amazing equity. Not amazing, but let's say, although, yeah, oh... Uh, does it make a difference? What is, if we click this, what happens? I don't know what is on this. Uh, we could click here and when we can click here. Click, blind was blind. Switch between tight and loose positions. Practices, but, okay, practices, but let's go on. Okay, this was already quite, quite bad. Uh, can we get it in or is this a check? Or is this 25%? Correct answer is pot, okay. I mean, I guess potting makes most sense, to be honest. He is not having this board crushed, but often he uses river too, so... Yeah, uh, this is a weaker hand now. Yeah, uh, this is a weaker hand now. As we have three aces, so this might be a check. No, it's still a pot-sized bet. New hand, uh, pot-sized bet. New hand, pot-sized bet, no, small. Why some are bets small remains a secret, I guess, as always, news spot. What is, I think I messed it up. I want everything still. And yeah, this was quite disappointing. That I messed up that bad in the forward port. What is this turn? Why do I have to check this? Okay, can I go here and here, then it's all checked again? Rainbow boards are allowed to. So we have to check it manually. Yeah, I guess you will learn the most. Generate, uh, if you go into sports and don't do this quiz function that much. Looks like a fold. Uh, not flush draw, gut shot, out of position. Nuts basically, so. Four, six, gut shot, flush draw. The same hand. I think it was, uh, eight, nine. Not folding, but for sure. Is he bluffing with this? No. So my dog, okay, we got a straight, got a pair blocked, got a flush draw, we got a straight redraw. Oh, I didn't recognize this, but there's a PFA on the guy who is pre-flop aggressor. So that's good to know. Um. Well, that's a bit tough. Might be a re-raise. Folding is not an option, but I mean, that even a donkey, I recognize this, uh. Flop was check, check, right? Whatever, yeah, where is the correct answer? New hand, uh. New hand. With six, six is good. Eight, nine, ten, jack. Is this time to spew? I mean, it doesn't seem to be too bad. With the five, we got an indirect blocker to a six, because a lot of hands would include a six, also include a five. If he has no full house yet, we still have outs and we might get pulled a lot of better stuff. And that's wrong. We fold. I mean, the flop was check, check, right? Although, I guess probably not check, check. Reload. Do we see what it was? So, okay, it was donk call. Yeah, I don't see how we can fold our hand ever. Uh, nine, seven, five, calling, I guess. Uh, eight, seven, folding. Folding. Calling, oh, so many rivers. That are tough, but yeah, we cannot get in. Folding also, hands seems to be a bit strong. Hmm, call of raise. Call. Interesting, which we dunked. Uh, yeah, that's a good hand. It's not so good. Uh, news spot. Oh, this is making me very tired. I'm exhausted already. Although I had to do some, a lot of, uh, stuff today too. That exhausted me. What happened? Flop was bet fifty percent, call, twenty checks. Why checking back seems to be very reasonable? Uh, I guess we don't want to check back because we got a good hand. No, not good enough. Uh, uh, we got hearts too, when we are good enough and if we do not have any interaction with the board, then we are also good enough to bet some. I guess that's because, I don't know, maybe this is because um the flush draw is a bit more dangerous and more likely, but he has it and yeah, we don't want to give him a free card. Can we get better hands to fold? Sometimes. Can we? Do we want to get check raised? Not at all. Do we get check raised a lot? I don't think so. Do we want to do some, like a merge bet here? I mean, our hand looks good for it, uh, and yeah. It was correct. Okay, this is a full house. Close to good hand, but apparently we don't want to bet a good hand. So sixty percent slow play, forty percent betting. With hearts, we do more checking when betting. Yeah, uh, this is exactly what I'm talking about. Uh, very hard to learn why he does certain things. Why is he checking these combinations and betting? Alas. We just need to remember that this is mixed. New hand. Um, checking cheese is completely fine. This says also bet some of the time and we want to bet it if we block a heart and have backdoor spades. Or if we have a lot of spades, otherwise we want to check. Three, four. Again, we got a good hand. We don't block a flush draw, I bet. This, that's wrong again, um. Oh, man. So if we have four three in spades, we bet often. And if we have spades with three or seven or four, seven, we check. This doesn't make too much sense in my eyes. You can see a mixed strategy, he's betting some, checking some and it's very hard to tell why this is a check. And this one is a bet. New hand. Could do a protection bet. Okay, let's do it. Um, no, we don't, but it's also almost fifty-fifty and we primarily want to bet with, uh, with, when blocking a heart. Okay, new hand. Uh, we have a nine, we have a flush draw, we have three. Now we cannot see who's a pretty aggressive anymore. Uh, I think he is. Yeah, uh, he cannot, he, we are blocking aces and kings. We, I guess it's a check. No. Although my hand is checking more than betting, my combo is a bet. Hmm. If only backdoor spades is a check. Both it is mixed between betting and checking. The not flush draw. This is very hard to read into. Very, very hard. Uh, why is he choosing these combos? I don't get it at all. Yeah. I know, but many hands have the full house blockers. I mean, he's betting sixty, uh, he's betting forty percent and checking sixty percent with the full house blockers, so. Why certain combos in the bet and some in the check category, but I don't get. I mean, mine is a hundred percent bets, but others are a hundred percent checked. These ones. And I don't get it. Maybe these other suits have something to do with his likelihood to have a six. So my hand is betting. We got a lot of hearts. I don't get it. It's very hard. If we would have only the hard flush draw, the other cards down interac with the board. I, I can't figure it out. Just can't. New hand, uh. We block a heart, so we bet. It's again, like, I don't. This is very hard to understand when it's bad and when not. I wonder how big the, uh, how is it called? The regret is if we just do one of the two options. Let's go to another spot. Check, check on the flop. And good flush, it's a good hand. We got seven, that's a good hand too, but we don't like the fact that we will have a hard time finding a full house, but I guess we cannot fold. Hmm. Nothing often can be folded, uh, another nothing. That's not, 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 nothing. Okay. Oh, I accidentally created a new spot, but that's fine, I guess. Uh. We have a queen, we have the nuts, we have two redraws. East duty G can easily happen ace with a ten jack, queen or king, two, oh, I'm, I'm talking shit, uh, I miss that the board, um. Let's rewind, so the board partner blocked the full house a bit, got two flush redraws, if he has a straight too. Uh, floppy checked, called the called a bet. I wouldn't be too scared yet. Uh. Does betting make sense, I guess? Checking, although can't be too bad either. I mean, we block all the draws, but the main hands not that much. Ugh. It's bad, although we bet. Let's control the pot and fuck off. My hand is checking ninety-five percent, but I got the one combination where there's betting. So yeah, two, two flush draws, pair blocker and the straights is, is too, too good. Seems. But if I had a little bit less backup, this becomes a check. Can you hand? Uh, we already learned about this. Ten, queen, oh. It's visible off. The bed size also seems to be off. I mean, why? I mean, why the fuck do we want to bet so big? So we block the nut flush draw. Block the full house. Got two gut shots too. Could have some fold equity. This is painful. Okay, let's do it. No. Always checking only with a lot of hearts, we bet. Okay. This is the same hand again. So easy game, um... Probably check. Straight is unlikely, at least a straight. But we got too much short on value too. Too bad, right? Just check, I suppose. No. Bet is the right answer. My hand is again checking ninety-five percent of the time. Only my hand wants to bet. It's the same hand again. Let's go for another spot. And then soon after I quit the session, um... Yeah, this is a bit... Yeah, I think it's a bit pointless, because you don't learn that much. It feels like you would just have to pick certain spots and look into the frequencies and the ranges. I think that's a lot more helpful than just getting a quiz with random stuff. Straits, trips. Flush beats us, flops, check-check, it's a forward port. Uh, who's the aggressor? We are... If we check the flop, we have no real reason to bet the turn. I mean, this flush is not getting away, I guess. But we bet small sum. Especially if we got the straight flush, so that makes sense. New hand. We got the straight flush, so we bet small. New hand, got the straight flush again, new hand. Uh, got nothing, so we check. We got something. It's really strong, so we bet twenty-five percent. No, we slow play. I thought this might be a good candidate to bet, because we don't have any spades and... Yeah, with no spades. I thought it's a good spot to try to milk the flush draw a bit. But yeah, maybe it's too much already, but he blocks the straight. Uh, straight flush and blocking everything. I like a check. But it's wrong, wrong, wrong. I mean, what should he have? He got a flush, he got straight. He can have full house or king, but that's about it. And we, the pot is already very big. We can still, if we won't get all the money on the river. Hands are repeating again. That's a good hand. Do we bet very small again, or is it... A pot size bet? No, it's very small again. Uh, let's do another spot and then quit the session. So, hundred B. Three bet, then check raised. Got the nuts, so let's get in. New hand, um... Seven, seven, check, that's not the nuts. Four, five, and then again the nuts. Uh, more nuts. Oh, that's not a nut. Uh, nuts. Hmm, like saying nuts. Uh, nuts, we also got dews. We nut the hand, um... So it... Folded correct answer. Yeah, I figured that. Um, nine dews, nuts. Nuts, although, yeah, nuts, definitely, um... Nuts. Nuts. Always the nuts. Sometimes not. Okay, this spot is very, very easy. This one not. This one is not easy. Fold, nope. I guess having the dews and also blocking straights a bit, having a backdoor flush draw, this is still enough. Okay, uh, okay. Okay. Five, okay. 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 Gut shot. This one seems tough. But probably still a fold, right? No, it is not. We only fold if we have no backdoors. Okay. 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 Rule of thumb here is when you got a pair in an open ender pot that's already that big, you probably don't want to fold. I learned this myself by doing PPT analysis and it seems that this holds true on a solver. And yeah, this is a lot better than the version we had before with the eights. So that has to get in. Uh, my ten queen. So gut shot, backdoor flush draw, let's get in. Uh... Backdoor flush draws and stuff, but not enough. Open, and then, 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 we have to wrap, right? No, 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 no. Uh, five, six, seven, yeah, that's very good. Seven, nine, oh, that's... Disturbing. Gut shot. Okay. Check queen. This feels close, probably is. I don't know. Hmm, backdoor flush draws also, I don't know. Okay, um, okay, it's, it's even with the versions of art. Backdoors, we still get it in. Yeah, that was the last spot. Uh, I hope you saw some interesting stuff that helped out your game. Unfortunately, I got to go now. I hope you enjoyed the stream. Thanks for watching. Until next time, bye-bye.